Let me know when we're on. All right, good morning, everyone. Today's Monday, March 22nd, 2021. It's 9:00 AM. We're here for Commissioner's Court meeting. The first item on our agenda today is the call to order, pledge of allegiance, and invocation led by Commissioner Daniel. So if you would, please say.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lord, I want to thank you for the stay and thank you for the beautiful weather and the rain that we've received. Lord, we ask that you watch over us, watch over the people in our county, the people in our nation. Lord, we just ask that you bless each and every one and guide us and protect us in everything that we do each and every day. In your name we pray.
Amen.
All right. First matter of business is to approve the minutes of the regular meeting for March 8th, 2021, special meetings on March 5th, 2021, and March 12th, 2021. Have you all had a copy of those minutes? Do you have here a motion that we would approve those minutes as presented?
I'll make the motion.
All right, motion made by Commissioner Cornell. Do you have here a second?
I'll second.
Second, Commissioner Daniel. Any discussion about those minutes? If not, follow those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Follow those opposed. All right. Next item is our auditorium report.
Good morning.
Good morning.
The only thing I have is, I'm going to discuss and approve the Halfway Fire Department 2020 Annual Run Report and authorize payment of the FY 2021 allocation of $12,500. And you should have one in your packet. It is the Halfway Fire Department review for 2020. Halfway Fire was paid to 22 fire calls in the year 2020. There were seven grass coals, one red, Halfway Fire managed, two weak field fires, two hay fires, four burr fires, two structure fires, one downed power line. And then mutual aid calls. There were two assists to Olten Fire Department, one assist to Plainview Fire Department, and two assists to Evanson Fire Department. Total miles traveled were 983 miles. Time spent working scenes were 117 hours, I guess. And that's the report. And then I'm also asking to authorize payment for the 2021 allocation of $12,500.
Okay, so you've heard the fire report from the Halfway Fire Department for 2020. Do you have here a motion to approve their report? And with that motion, the motion to allocate their 2021 stipend of $12,500. Follow the motion. Motion made by Commissioner Kelly. Do you have here a second? Second by Commissioner King. Any discussion? If not, follow those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Follow those opposed. Thank you, ma'am. Our next item is the treasures report.
Okay, Judge. On Friday, I realized that I made the financial report and the affidavit. And so I signed it. So I'm going to ask the court to approve the financial report today, on the right date, and place it in the minutes. And the amount was $24,549,026.20. And I hereby certify that this report is true and correct and request that you place it in the minutes.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the financial report?
I'll make the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Daniel. Do you have here a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Daniel. Any discussion? If not, follow those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Follow those opposed.
Okay, and my next item is the affidavit that you've been placed in this paper, just thinking that the court has received review and proof that my actual report.
Okay. Do you have here a motion to approve the affidavit?
I'll make the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Kelly. Do you have here a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Daniel. Any discussion? If not, follow those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Follow those opposed.
That's all the after.
All right, thank you. All right, the next items we have, on Friday, I read the Petersburg Financial and Run Report for Petersburg NMS for February of 2021. Do you have here a motion that we approve that report as presented?
I'll make the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Daniel. Do you have here a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner King. Any discussion? If not, follow those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Follow those opposed. Okay, the next item I had was the 53 Ken funding for Spartan Transportation. I read you the letter that they needed to show our support for their grant. And so I read that into the, to y'all on Friday. Do you have here a motion that you approve me submitting that letter to?
I'll make the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Cornell. Do you have here a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Kelly. Any discussion? If not, follow those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Follow those opposed. Glad you approved that. I already got it. All right, my next item is agreement plan, agreement slash plan for the Lower Running Water Drawn Site Four. And that's where our BS come in today, so whoever did that business about that, send that agreement. Jim Pirelli, our county attorney, can you, I did give him that agreement on Friday. And so like.
I'll introduce yourself and. My name is Mark Northcutt. I'm with USDA, NRCS, Natural Resources Conservation Service. And we're here to talk about the rehabilitation project of Lower Running Water Drawn Site Four. That project became part of our rehab program several years ago when we did a planning study on it to see what was needed to upgrade it. That dam was originally built as what's considered a low hazard dam. And due to development downstream, it became a high hazard dam. So the classification changed, which meant it no longer met the state's safe dam safety criteria. And through the USDA rehabilitation program, we can go in there and offer assistance to upgrade these dams. So that dam went through the planning process to determine exactly what was needed. Once that plan was authorized through NRCS, it was eligible for money to proceed with design and construction. So the design's been going on for about the last year to finalize exactly what's needed for that site. And so we're finalizing design now right now, so we're trying to get ready to actually go into construction phase. And that's where we're kind of at today. Once, once the designs are approved by NRCS, then we'll work through the local Hell County Soil and Water Conservation District. They agreed to kind of take the lead since the sponsors are Soil and Water Conservation District, Hell County, and Blue City of Plainview. This is one of the sponsors. So one of the sponsors, or as a group, they'll take charge on getting permits and all necessary land rights. So in addition to what the dam already has, or maybe a little bit of additional land rights to get the structure in and maybe some upstream flow easements. I don't think there's really, nothing really changed as far as actually what's out there. New criteria is that easements will be surveyed in by meets and bounds. And so they'll probably be a bit tighter than they were previously. But then, then the sponsor will sign a new O and M agreement for the life of the dam, which is 100 years. So I believe that's what, you might have a copy of the O and M agreement that basically updates the requirements to take care of the dam.
Okay.
I'm here as a representative of the NRCS, Trent Street, with M and E Consultants, did the engineering workforce. So if there's, I guess really if there's any question related to what we're finished enough with or what we're trying to do with this next step, we're here to try to answer those questions.
I'll give them a quick little update on the, on the project and design. M and E Consultants is doing the design, working with NRCS. We have to send it in for reviews. Right now, it's in Fort Worth, the NRCS office, to be reviewed for the 90%. I'm supposed to be getting those comments back any day. We'll work through the comments, address their concerns, make those changes. And then we will submit it to NRCS for their final approval. The, just a little bit on the dam, I think it was built in 74, something like that. Consists of an earthen dam with a pipe through the dam and an earthen spillway around the end. The modifications are to leave the earthen spillway, we're going to raise the elevation a little bit. We're going to put in a new inlet on the pipe that goes through the dam. And we're putting in a large concrete structure over the top of the dam. It's probably, I don't know, 320, 340 feet wide. And, and that is needed for the hydraulic capacity that it has to have because it was raised to a high hazard. We've got to be able to pass larger rainfalls through, through the dam. So instead of widening the auxiliary or the earthen spillway, which it's 300 feet wide right now, we couldn't really go any wider because it was going to get out into cropland fields. So we're putting a structure over the, over the top of the dam. So there will be some land rights probably needed on the downstream side beyond where the existing fence is. I'm looking maybe two acres at the, at the most. So if y'all have any questions, I'm here to talk about, about the design. But that's kind of what we're doing with it. And I, if y'all, if you're interested in looking at any plans, I've, I've made a few copies of stuff that if you're interested, I can put out on the table and we can kind of look at it.
You were talking about the downstream part, walking across the road on that lane?
No, it'll all be, the land rights will all still be on.
Casier?
Casier, yeah, Doug's Casier. All the land rights. There is one area that I, I don't know, but when you get to the north end of the lake, when it's in flood stage, and I, and I think the existing elevation for the easement that was obtained back in the 70s is like elevation 34.21.8. And I've traced that out with current LiDAR information. And it appears that it may cross over Doug's place into the adjacent land over there. And I, but I'm going to say that's less than three, four, five acres, something like that. And, and that's extreme condition for water to even get to that elevation. But I think the earthen, or the concrete spillway we're putting in is like 34.15.8. And the easement would be about six feet above that. And once water gets into the, above the big overflow spillways, it comes down real fast. So it, there might be some backup water for half a day or something like that on that north property of Doug's place.
Any other questions?
You know, rain's been pretty hard to come by here these past few years, but it will rain again and we'll be really proud to have that dam.
So one quick, one last thing, since nobody brought it up, I'll bring up the money part of it. So right now, we're, we're looking at an estimated cost of right, right at $4 million for this project. The rehab program authorizes a cost share of 65, federal government to 35% sponsor share. The sponsors can, and I think will, go into an agreement with the Texas State Soil and Water Conservation Board through their flood control program that will cost share 95% of that 60, or that 35%. So sponsor shares somewhere around, yeah. Right now, it's looking at about $81,000, I believe, for that sponsor share. And that is cash in kind. So any additional land rights or easements, the cost of that can be considered in kind cost. So that just needs to be evaluated on what the actual costs come out to be. And then we can offset that, that basically offsets the share from the sponsor.
And I, I think land rights is, is part of the cost share. Is that correct?
Well, it's considered in kind.
Okay.
Those costs help offset that cash. But right now, we've got, we've got for in kind, we have $100,000 for project administration kind of set up for it. $100,000 for project administration, $75,000 for land rights, and $10,000 for planning and design assistance. So those, those are kind of set aside. So if the county spends up to that much money for any one of those items, and that's how that offsets. But whatever they do spend, we need to kind of see a record of what that is. So any appraisal as far as land rights or easements does have to be certified appraisal.
Once this project's started, how long timeframe are we looking at to complete it?
That, I'm thinking that we'll probably get started maybe late summer, early fall. And it's probably like 500 calendar days, so it's, it's pretty. And I may have overestimated rain days and stuff like that, but, but it, I'm going to say 400 to 500 days of construction time.
And on our conference call today, when we were talking, someone mentioned that our, our share of the expenses would probably be at the end of the project.
That's true. That I'll have to follow up on, because I, we have an agreement through Texas State Soil and Water Conservation Board for this project. So we have an agreement, NRCS to the state board, sponsors have an agreement with the state board. So it's kind of a triangle and whenever they make a payment, I'm not sure whose funds they're really using first. But, but I know there's not an upfront cost to, to the sponsors.
Okay, well, we were just trying to look and see if, if the project doesn't begin to fall that in our budget process in the summer, with the budget or necessary funding that would take effect from January 1st of next year.
Yeah, so I would say summertime would probably, midsummer would probably be a realistic estimate before we start construction. As Trent mentioned, you know, we're, as soon as we get the comments back from the Fort Worth Technical Center and we work through those to get 100%, and that'll go to our state conservation engineer who will actually sign and seal the drawings. At that point then, NRCS will work with the sponsor on putting together the solicitation package and making an advertisement to solicit construction bids. So there's still a few things that have to go on. And the main thing before we can actually solicit that construction bid would be to obtain the permits. The main one would be the US Army Corps of Engineers 404 permit. So NRCS is assisting the district to kind of work through that. The original plan didn't really identify that there'd be a whole lot of issues with it. But the Corps, you know, when they issued the 404 permit, they look at other things, especially threatened endangered species and cultural resources issues. Again, the, the plan never really identified any major issue to come up. But when the Corps is going through their permitting process, they'll, they might want to make sure, hey, did this get done? Did that get done? Did the Texas State of Storage Office okay this as well? So NRCS will work with the district on that. But I think they sent off the Corps permit. We're getting ready to send it off here pretty quick.
I think there was email that there was sent in. And since it's an existing dam and we're not, we're not changing the water level in the, well, we are, we're kind of, we're lowering the water level a little bit, but most of the time, the water is way down below, just in the area where they did the excavation. And, and we didn't change a lot on the downstream side. So it's a lot easier to get a permit on an existing dam than it is to get a whole one for a new dam. So hopefully that process goes pretty quick.
Any other questions? Then what, Jim, correct me if I'm wrong, what we need to say is the understanding that the project's going forward and at some point in time, the court will be presented with a request for funds?
Yes, sir. If I could ask, can I?
Yes, sir.
On the conference call, it sounded like the state funding's not completely lined up. Is that, I know there's probably no guarantees, but is that sort of a guarantee deal or?
As much as you can guarantee money, I guess, sir. So like I said, the federal government's kicking in their share. And right now, we have on the conference call, we identified about a $500,000 shortfall based off the 90% design. NRCS is currently requesting those funds through the rehab program. So we've got a request up to our national office to come up with those additional funds for, for the project. I believe what you're referring to is that 95% from the state, the state funds, they have a June 1st deadline for obligation. And so they're working, looking at the projects, they want to be coming online and trying to make sure that they can get those funds obligated. So those sponsors that they're currently working with, that are about to get ready to go, they're going to send out all that paperwork to try to get those signatures done. So that if the permit is kind of late coming through, they've kind of got it ready. And if they have to, they'll go ahead and execute prior to that June 1st date. So they were just wanting to make sure everybody knew that, they were going to try to send those agreements out and get them signed. And that way, if it got down to the last minute, the 11th hour, the state board can sign it and go ahead and execute it before the state pulls those funds back. But they do have them now, they're just wanting to make sure that they don't lose them.
My, my second question is, I guess at some point, there'll be an actual agreement for us and Water, Soil and Water Conservation District and the city to sign saying, we're actually going to fund this and do the actual construction.
So the signatures were actually signed at when the planning stage was completed. The sponsors were required to sign a new watershed agreement for the rehabilitation plan. So that was back two or three years ago, when that plan, before the plan was authorized, we have to get signatures saying, here's, here's what we're going to do, everybody's agreeing to this. And at that time, we get a rough estimate on what a rehab project would cost. But the watershed agreement itself was signed back when the plan, marketing plan was authorized. At this point, we're just signing that point in. Well, did us, did y'all get a copy of that watershed agreement?
I kind of found that, yes. I, I know there's something that said we, except to me, it was like we were saying, yeah, Lord, you know, sure, we're supporting this.
It's not, I can, I can definitely get you a copy.
If you could send that to me, I appreciate it. So Judge, to answer your question, my suggestion would be for y'all to, if you want to, and I think it's probably a good idea to vote to approve the, you know, moving forward with the project and maybe authorize you to sign any thing that's necessary, like to get the state funding. So y'all have, I mean, that way they don't have to wait for y'all to have a meeting to get the documents signed.
Okay, all right.
No, I didn't, no. So there is a requirement for the land rights themselves, a form that we have that the sponsor signs. The form itself is, is pretty generic, but accompanying that form is a letter from the attorney, the attorney's opinion letter that says, yes, we do have all necessary easements and access to the project. So if that hadn't been discussed or talked about, we can certainly follow up with that to make sure that they'll understand those requirements. So was there, has there been any discussion on that?
Not that I'm aware of.
I'm assuming the county would probably, county attorney will sign the letter, so. But if, if y'all need to look at final drawings, and like I said, Trent can provide any specific details upon those additional areas so that they can either go out there and have sort of their sheet goes in and determine what's needed and then get the certification to form and attorneys.
Okay.
Noticeable need to be completed obviously for our construction.
Okay. So I guess what we're looking for, any other questions of anybody?
Yes.
Yeah, go ahead.
My name's Ricky James. I'm on the conservation board here in Hell County. This dam was built, started in 74, I believe. It was finished in 77. And it's a 50-year structure, and we're coming up on that pretty quick. And they offered this to us because they changed the priority in that dam. And when they changed that priority, well, the liability's fixing to fall back on all of us if we don't do what they're asking us to do. So we have an opportunity to do this with them funding nearly all of it. And I know we've still got to come up with some money, but we, we don't want this whole responsibility and it not being done because they've told us that it's in high priority. And if we didn't do anything, it's going to fall every bit of it on our lap. The thing that happens on this thing is, is there's over 2,000 structures in the state of Texas. Now, how we ranked up to get as high as we did, as quick as we did, with no more rainfall than what we get in our county is unbelievable. But I'm glad they did it. I'm glad we ranked up there. And you get off in downstate, Houston, Dallas area, now that's a critical deal down there. There's some of those counties that's got 400 dams in them. And, you know, we're very fortunate that we just have three in our county. There's actually five in this project, and the next one's in Palmer County and the next one's in. One actually in New Mexico. Yeah, I thought we were in Mexico. Clovis area. Matter of fact, Clovis tried to sue us here a few years ago over that deal. Because they wanted, they thought Texas had a lot of money and they could fix that deal. Anyway, there's a lot of history that goes back in that deal. I had Latrice, our secretary, brought a scrapbook up here the other day with some pictures of the flood in 1960. David looked at it and, and I wished I'd had it this morning so y'all could have seen some of that.
Is that the one where the Grady Bill Holmes?
Yeah, yeah, it flowed right down the middle of, right in front of the Dairy Queen today. But it was pretty interesting. This funny story behind that deal, this way off the subject with that home, that house. I used to farm a place up in Swisher County. It was Gail Thompson's place. And he told me one day, he said, that's the famous house that was floating down Fifth Street. Or I guess it's, no, it wouldn't be Fifth Street. That was.
Yeah, Fifth Street, right there.
Yeah, it's sitting right there across Seventh Street Park, but.
Gail ended up with the house?
Yeah, he bought the house. He was sitting up there on the place and he was telling me about that. And I said, really? I was just five or six years old when all that took place. And I was trying to think, and y'all may, maybe some of y'all know, I don't know. But I think that rain was between 12 and 15 inches, I think is what that rain was. And.
I, I think that, that.
Does that sound right?
I, I was five years old living in Crassie. I vaguely remember that coming and seeing that.
Where was another rain after that? Because I was little, I wasn't even born when that one hit. But there was another one that we were still living on West Street Road.
Yeah, yeah.
That where McCoys was.
Yeah.
McCoys wouldn't even been there because there was water from Highway 70 all the way up to the front road of West Street Road. It was like on the sixth river going through there.
And I, I mean, I don't know, will we ever see that again? I've got four other board members think this is ridiculous. But, you know, one of those 50-year rains, it could be devastating. And then this one being ranked as well as being ranked, and if it fails, well, it could get ugly.
Hundred-year flood we had a few years ago, I was still living in Pleasant Hills. And me and Benny Campbell had a conversation at Commissioner's Court. He said, Aaron, if you stood near the driveway to see if we've had enough rain on Cuzee's Dam to see if it's coming over the spillway.
Yeah.
So I go home that afternoon and I've got my. if it's coming over the spillway. So I go home that afternoon and I've got my documents out there. And I'm looking across the drawl out there and Sherry comes in and she goes, what are you doing? I said, I think we got enough rain. There may be water coming over that spillway of that dam. And she's like, there's the dam behind our house.
At any rate, other than that, as our phone call told us the other day, we need to get on board. We need to get everything signed because if we don't get this stuff taken care of by the, I think it's 28th May, isn't that right? We're gonna, we could lose that funding. I mean, they may pass it on to somebody else and we'd have to start all over. I know it's the money that's costing the city and I know it's costing the county, but since we are a sponsor of it, we're gonna, we need to move forward, I think. Just my opinion. But I don't know. I do remember Jimmy Lewis used to be the conservationist out there at the district. And he took pictures of it. The dam was finished in 77. And it was nearly full in 77 after a pretty good sized rain. And the next dam from there up is the one on Running Water Drawl, Schoold House. Kevin Igoe's place is where the second one is. And the third one's up in the northwest corner up there, right across from Griffith's place.
Foster.
Where it's at.
Foster.
Yeah. I was meeting one time with Demet one day and they had all of the sponsors there. And they were wanting to raise the level up so it'd be more like a lake and, you know, people have recreation. And they informed me over there in Palmer County that the only one that's benefiting out of these dams is Playview, Texas, in Hill County, that we're not raising nothing up here. So that's how we rank and follow this stuff. But anyway, I guess what we'll end up doing, if everybody's okay with it, we'll do the administrative part of it. We've got a lady that's going to help us that works out the M and D and retired. She's going to check everything off. And when everything's done, she'll notify us. We'll sign off on it after she approves it, that part of it's been done. And then we'll pay it. And then we'll just pay it as she approves it. And then I guess one of the project engineers will tell her.
Well, the NRCS is going to actually do the construction oversight. So they'll have a construction engineer and they'll have an inspector out here on a daily basis while they're doing the construction. But they'll be working through the lady that works with us that does the contracting and for approved payments and all that, all that kind of stuff during the construction process.
Something we did ask, and this is probably, do we have to keep federal funds separate from state funds? In other words, do we have to carry checking accounts when it intermingles?
So the, well, y'all won't ever see the federal funds because we'll reimburse the construction phase of...
Okay, so all we'll save is state money. Okay.
NRCS paid 100% for the planning phase, for the design phase, and the cost share rate due to the construction side of it. When those payments come through, NRCS will pay the 65% of those construction costs.
Okay. At any rate, that's all I've got. I hope that...
I was going to make one other point about this. Since these dams have been built, so we may have had some rainfalls up here that would have affected this area down here. But with the dams being built, it held that water back and nobody ever knew it. And so just because nothing's happened, a lot of that could be attributed to the dams that are already built and there to protect down here. There's probably nothing that on the magnitude of like 1960, but some of these 100-year rainfalls a few years ago, you would have seen a lot more water down here in the dams that year.
Yeah, that one I was talking about a few years ago. Because the drawl was actually running. If you'd had all that water off of that dam coming down through here, you might have had stuff floating in Fifth Street again. Because that was moving on.
All right. Well, thank y'all for being here today and speaking to us. So I guess we're looking for a motion to work with the progression of this, is it rehab of this water sign full. And so I guess we're looking for a motion to continue pursuing that and also to authorize me as the county judge, the authority to sign any type of agreements or documents that need to be signed in regards to them.
I'll make the motion.
Right. Motion made by Commissioner Kelly. You got here second.
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Daniel. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed?
Aye.
Like I said, once again, thank y'all for being here today. You're welcome to stay on the end or you're welcome to leave, whichever y'all choose to do.
Thank y'all. Y'all need anything else, give me a holler. I don't know if y'all know or not, but this is the famous Berry Street.
We found out.
I'm his big brother.
Well, I was, those pictures that that lady had the other day, I couldn't remember. My parents told me about the house floating down Fifth Street where Dairy Queen is. They got stuff some tricks.
Well, I found out something. I never did know what happened to that house.
You know the rest of the story, y'all.
I think it's coming down now, but that was it. I was asking Gail, saying, why don't you buy it? It's a party.
It was a riverbed. There was a flood now, so.
All right. So next item on the agenda is the district attorney. Carla, do you know anything about that?
I don't.
Okay. And so if we're not seeing anyone here, we'll come back to if we need to. The next item is the sheriff's office.
Good morning.
Good morning.
This one, and I would like to present to y'all, after the fact of long-term employee EAK boner, I'd like to do some restructuring next year to the upper administration. I would like to name George Burnall as the jail administrator. He is currently a 1423. I would like to make him a jail administrator, raise him to an 1819 with exempt status effective 218 of 21, which is the date of his obtaining of his jail administrator license. George has stepped up and helped during AJ's sickness, learned a lot and it really helped us out. I would also like to name Debbie Allenese as assistant jail administrator. Her and George have worked good together. And she has stepped up and really helped in the absence of AJ after he passed. She's at a 1419. I would like to raise her to a 1716, effective date 3/5 of 2021, when she obtained her jail administration license. I would also, at this time, restructure Ellen Burnett, who was chief deputy of patrol. I would like to do away with the chief deputy of detention, keep it on the books, but do away with it unbundled and promote Ellen Burnett to chief deputy of the sheriff's department. She is currently at a 2118, but we'd like to move her to a 2021. I'd also like to note that during AJ's sickness, Ellen did step up and go obtain her jail administration license to help out with the jail in the absence of AJ coming and going and everything. So she is certified jail administrator also.
So she, let me interrupt you just for a second. You said she was a 2118? And then you said you want to raise her to 20, 21?
21, 21. I'm sorry.
21, okay.
Yes, sir. Her position would change from chief deputy of patrol to just chief deputy of the sheriff's department.
Okay.
There's a hope. So the structure would be the sheriff, chief deputy, jail administrator, assistant jail administrator, and then flow down. Is what I would like to do.
And all this funding is within your current budget?
It's all within my current budget here, sir.
Okay. All right. I guess we'll take these one at a, one at a time. And so the first one is in reference to George Burnall. He is currently a 1423. David would like to promote him to the jail administrator, pay group 18, 18?
19. 1819.
18, step 19. And that is an exempt position. And that would be effective from February 18 of 2021. Got your motion to approve that?
I'll make the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Cornell. You got here second.
Aye.
Second by Commissioner King. Any discussion about that one? If not, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed? All right. The second one is in regards to Debbie Allenese, to promote her from a pay group 1419, to promote her to the assistant jail administrator, which is a pay group 17, step 16, effective 3/5 of 2021. Okay. Here a motion to approve that promotion.
Counselor.
Motion made by Commissioner King. You got here second.
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Daniel. Any discussion about Debbie?
Now, I forgot to ask, are they just going to be six months and one year?
Yes, they will be eligible for six months, one year.
Okay. All right. No other questions? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed? And then the last step in regards to Ellen Burnett, she was the co-chief deputy. And David is making her the single chief deputy of the sheriff's office and a pay group raise from 21, pay group 21, step 18, to pay group 21, step 20. Affected today or when?
2/25 of 2020 is when she obtained her jail license.
All right. Affected from 2/25 of 2020.
No, but the effective date, she obtained it 2/25, but her effective date would be 3/22. She obtained that on her own, helped out. So her effective date would be...
Sheriff, I know you explained it already. Again, would you explain the difference in what Ellen's position is and what it was?
Ellen's position as chief deputy of patrol, she just handled the patrol deputy and the courthouse security, moving her to just one chief deputy. She is over at the jail of my presence and also patrol, also courthouse security. She is me when I'm not around.
Okay.
So she, the responsibility went up immensely because now she's taking on the jail, took her.
Thank you. Any other questions? If not, got your motion to promote Ellen Burnett to this position.
I'll make the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Cornell. You got here second. Second by Commissioner King. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed?
Thank y'all so much. Appreciate you.
All right. Wally?
Morning.
Morning.
I'm here to notify the commissioners' court, present the co-criminal procedure. I've done it before. We're going to make an expenditure out of the forfeiture fund, which, as y'all know, is not taxpayers' money. That is money that is seized as a result of an arrest and an ultimate conviction, primarily on drug cases, but it can be, any crime that's committed when they use property or there's money involved, if we seize that, that goes into a forfeiture fund. It has to be expended for a certain number of things that are law enforcement related. If you recall, we had done things like my cameras, body cams, that sort of thing. We've also in the past tried to, all of the DA's offices have tried to donate a percentage of whatever we take in for that previous year to the foundation. And what the foundation does, if you recall, is that helps fund remote training, where we will have regional training for our CLA classes where they'll hold them either in Amarillo or Lovett. That's usually where we go. But they also have it in Midland and various places where, in addition to what we had pre-COVID, which was our yearly training session that was a week long, where we notify everybody that all of my other guys go and get the majority of that. It also helped fund that. Core criminal appeals also has a grant that goes into that. We are notifying as required by law that we intend to donate $3,000 out of our forfeiture fund. One reason we especially need to, we all need to donate this year is because of COVID, we had to do all of our training remote. And these funds went to and will continue to go to a studio that they built at our corporate headquarters in Austin. And so this year, if you recall, we did not go to the annual convention. They did not hold them. What they did was, once they got that, and it was very good, I mean, it was very professional. It looked very good. They had speakers flown in and everything. Now, you had to pay for it. It was not free. But we basically got 16 hours worth of CLA, which pretty much covered what we needed for that year. And it was all remote. There is still some cost associated with operating that. And so again, core criminal appeals kicked in a substantial amount to get that going because that helped train statewide. But that $3,000 is what we are notifying the court that we're going to give to the foundation. And by the way, if you want to personally give to the foundation, it's tax deductible. So you can write that off.
Okay. Any questions, Wally? If there's no action to be taken, this is just a courtesy of him coming and talking.
Thank y'all. My excuse.
Yes, sir. All right. And then our last item on the agenda today is from Commissioner Precinct Board in regards to an auction.
Okay, we've been having auctions at least once a year, here with some vehicles and one, you know, big ticket items. So I'm asking for Commissioner to do this again. And I recently talked to a lady at Long Star Auction and she said we could set a minimum like for chip spreader and zipper. Either way, we don't just give away. So we're allowed to do that. Now, I don't have a date yet on the auction, so a couple of weeks, hopefully, if we can get everything together and get it awesome.
Okay. So basically, it's just information. We don't need to take any action.
Body commission.
Okay. Do I, and you make them that in the form of a request?
I have a question.
All right.
That MG that we just, we had a hurry to get back, they got stolen. Is that, we could put that on the auction? Get rid of that? How does that work, Jim? It's a car that was out at, Tyra King, that had been stolen out of a barn.
Cadillac? A Cadillac?
No, it was a little MG. It was already there when we got there. And somebody stole it and then we got it back. And it's sitting at my barn. Can we put it on the auction and get rid of it?
It's not much of a car. I actually wished we hadn't have found it. We'd found it in the park.
Yeah, that's true. Because the car was parked in my pocket.
Let me, let me get back to you on that.
Okay. Because I don't know what to do with it. It's sitting in the middle of my yard down there. When they stole it, there was no wheels on it. So they found wheels and they went and found bolts.
They had plenty of tires that...
And they put, and they put tires on it and they didn't use lug nuts. They just used bolts and bolted two bolts on each tire to get it to where it'd roll out and give it out of there.
It sounded like a good drug forfeiture car. I think that's a sheriff's truck.
I think so, too.
Is it a convertible?
I can't understand why anybody went to all that trouble to steal it.
You should have seen us towing it from the house on Denver Street back to the barn with my guy sitting in the seat pulling it down the street. It was like...
Okay. Well, we'll check on the availability of them in the auctions before now and then. So, all right. Jimmy's made a motion to have an auction. You got here a second. Second by Commissioner Daniel. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed? Well, that concludes our agenda today. Thank everybody for being here. Jeff, please, if you have anything you wanted to say about the project or anything?
Yeah, I apologize for walking too late. The city's in support. We've got it scheduled on our agenda in April to approve O M, or operate as a maintenance agreement. So I know this project started back in 2008 when they initially classified it as high hazard. And, you know, now we're actually at the point where we're going to see construction happen, so we're pleased to see it moving forward now.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Well, if there's nothing else to come before the motion, we'll stay in adjourned at 9:50. Thank y'all.